Hello and welcome to FFRF's Ask an Atheist. I'm Liz Cavell, Associate Counsel. Over the last month, school boards across the country held their first meetings of the year. And unfortunately, we're seeing many newly-elected school board members trying to institute prayer at their school board meetings. FFRF has received numerous complaints of this, and we've been responding. Today, we're going to discuss our efforts to combat prayer at school board meetings, why we're doing it, what the law is. And I'm joined by fellow FFRF attorney, Chris Line. Hello, Chris. As always, we want to hear what you're thinking about this subject and any questions. Please leave them below in the Facebook chat, or you can email them to askanatheist@ffrf.org. So, Chris, let's first just quickly recap. This is not a new thing. This is not an unaddressed legal area. What's the status of the law when it comes to praying at school board meetings?
Yeah, it's important to point out right at the outset here that school board prayer is unconstitutional. Prayer at school board meetings falls within the category of public school religious activities that the courts deem to be a violation of the Establishment Clause, rather than the type of prayer that's been subjected to a narrow legislative exception. That's what allows Congress and governmental bodies to host prayer under certain circumstances. But school board prayer is unconstitutional because it is state-sponsored, majoritarian course of prayer that impacts and affects impressionable young schoolchildren. This violates the purposes of the First Amendment Religion clauses that protect the liberties of conscience of all individuals, you know, that shield religious minorities from majoritarian religious compulsion, and, you know, preserves the sanctity of both government and religion. And that's the case whether the prayer is provided by a clergy member, whether that's a school board member doing it, or even state officials, or even the students themselves doing it. A school board can't bring students in to lead prayer.
Right. And like you mentioned, school board prayer is analogous to prayer in schools. The school board is an essential part of the public school system. And so, when courts over decades have analyzed prayer in school board meetings, prayer as an official part of school board meetings, they have used the same analysis that they've used in the school prayer context, which is extreme vigilance, right? And a protectiveness towards the impressionability of schoolchildren, students, and also the acknowledgement that there are fewer coercive government entities than a public school district. And so, prayer at school board meetings has been, you know, ruled roundly by federal courts to be a violation of the Establishment Clause. Now, unfortunately, some school boards across the country continue to violate that principle and that constitutional rule by conducting prayer at their meetings. Again, if your school board is praying, you can contact school district officials to inform them that they are violating your constitutional rights. You can also report this violation to FFRF. But Chris, why don't you tell us about some of the recent complaints that we've received and acted on in the context of school board prayer?
Yeah, like you noted, there have been quite a few coming in because a whole bunch of new school boards just got sworn in, often with new members. Some of those members are explicitly there for nefarious purposes to push religion, or, you know, were elected on those sort of platforms. But, so for example, on January 10th, we wrote to the School Board of Highlands County in Florida after it was reported that they regularly opened their school board meetings with Christian prayer. We included a transcript of the prayer from their December 5th meeting, which was led by a pastor named Trent Morgan from Pastor Assembly Church. He delivered that prayer in the mighty name of Jesus. And he actually dedicated a whole sermon to our complaint after we sent our letter, and we have a clip of that.
... board. I went on December the 5th, and I prayed to open the school board meeting. And as you, if you did read that paper, you found in that article that there was a foundation called the Freedom From Religion Foundation that was alerted to a Christian prayer that happened at our school board. And they were alerted that our school board regularly invites Christian pastors to come and pray. And they, this Freedom From Religion Foundation decided that they would put in writing a threat to our school board that this is not allowed, and we should not be doing these types of things, and yada, yada, and all this, and the threatening of the Constitution and all of this stuff. The School Board of Highlands County, we stand with you, we support you, and we pray for you. Thank you for not bowing down to a written threat. This is not the first time they've received something like this over the years. It likely will not be the last time, but the first one didn't stop them, and I pray that they don't stop with this letter that they have received as well. So, we pray for you, we stand with you, and we thank you for invoking the opportunity to call on the name of Jesus for our school systems in Highlands County. If you're watching online or in the building directly to the Freedom From Religion Foundation and anyone aligned with you, should you ever try to keep me from praying in the mighty name of Jesus, we will use every means necessary according to the law to protect the right in His name to pray, yes, even in public places. We are members of the Alliance Defending Freedom organization, and they stand ready to help us fight that constitutional right to profess the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen?
Yikes!
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's, one of the main reasons I wanted to show this clip is to just show, I think the big thing proponents of like, school board prayer, of legislative prayer, try to say is that, you know, "Well, the prayer, it's not really a religious thing, you know, it's just, we're going to solemnize the meeting, and it's not about Christianity. It's just, you know, it's a secular, it's fine," you know? Well, this shows, I mean, this pastor who got to come give it, it shows that's not how he viewed it. He doesn't think he's going to the school board to solemnize a meeting. He clearly knew he was going there to spread the message of Jesus, as you can tell from his messaging, and that's what he wants, and that's clearly what the school board wants in allowing him.
Hey, 100%. And again, these issues in our letter that he takes so much issue with, our complaint, is to the public school district. It's not to his church, and it has nothing to do with his right to pray in public or anywhere else. But none of us has a free speech right to become part of a public school board meeting agenda and speak there. And certainly, when that speech is proselytization and it aligns the public school district with one particular sectarian faith as he's preaching from the pulpit, that's a problem. That violates the rights of all the public school students who are not aligned with his faith. And that's, that's the basis of the complaint. That's the yada, 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 blah, 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 part of our complaint that, you know, he doesn't care about because he's a subscriber to the religion that's being invoked by the public school district. But that just ignores the many students and families who are part of that district community who do not subscribe to that faith.
Yeah, I mean, as you saw in the clip, he essentially tried to yada, yada, yada over the Constitution, I mean, the constitutional threat or whatever. And yeah, I mean, clearly, people like this don't care about the Constitution. They'll bring up the free exercise of religion, but they don't care to actually understand what the Constitution protects and when it's invoked.
And that's fine. Pastors don't have to care about the Constitution, but public school board members do because they represent all students in the district, and that's who they serve. And they owe it to students in the district to respect their rights first and not just the rights of those aligned with their own personal faith.
Yeah. So, we can move on to another complaint. On January 11th, we wrote to the Rockingham County School Board in Virginia after multiple concerned district parents reported that newly-elected board chair Matthew Cross unilaterally decided to end the board's decade-long practice of holding a moment of silence instead of opting for prayer because, as he said, "We need God's help." We have a clip from this meeting.
Next, tonight is something new that's on our, our agenda here in Rockingham County. It once was on our agenda back in 2010, and as the chairman of the board, I have decided we will follow suit with our local elected officials, such as the Rockingham County Board of Supervisors and state delegates and representatives, along with the United States Congress, and open the governing body, this governing body, with an invocation. I believe the majority of our community would agree with me. We need God's help in the days we are living in. And so, tonight, if you would join me in a moment of prayer. If you don't, that's okay as well, but I'm going to say a prayer as we open up tonight. Heavenly Father, we need your wisdom, your discernment, understanding, and patience. Protect our children, our teachers, administrators, and staff while they are in our schools. May your peace that goes beyond all understanding rest upon our schools. Amen.
Yeah, so a lot going on there. Obviously, the big thing here being, they were already doing a moment of silence for the past decade, so anyone who wanted to pray had that opportunity. But for this, you know, newly-elected board member, he's like, "Well, if I pray during a moment of silence, like, how are people going to know I'm praying? And like, how am I really going to show that I'm a Christian and, you know, make sure that, you know, you keep voting for me?" Things like that. And so, obviously, he's then switching. And another thing we know, he's invoking, "Oh, well, Congress prays, and this, the local county can pray, so we can pray." Just something we talked about, that a school board is different. It's not the same as a legislative body. You've got children, I mean, you can see in the video, actually, there's students there. It's not the same thing as legislative prayer. Not that we shouldn't be having prayer at Congress, and it's also unnecessary, but even within the bounds of what unfortunately is now the law, this is unconstitutional compared to that. And so, he's trying to pretend this is that sort of thing, but it's not.
Right. Public schools are different. Students are compelled to attend school by law. They're young, they're impressionable, they're still forming their own opinions about their beliefs. And also, their parents have a right to direct their religious upbringing or not, and that's a personal, family, parents' rights issue. This person is a public school official, and if he thinks that God is needed in today's world, it's his right to pray to that God, you know, up and down, you know, up here during the moment of silence. And nothing is preventing anybody on the board from doing that. This is doing something beyond that, which is putting the school district's stamp of approval on a particular brand of religion, which is wrong.
Yeah. So, we were actually able to get some action here. Unfortunately, it's not going to be long-lasting. But on January 17th, Chair Cross actually posted on his Facebook page that, "Over the past several years, I've desired to open school board meetings in a moment of prayer instead of a moment of silence. Throughout America's history, elected officials have sought God's wisdom, guidance, and protection for themselves, and over those whose decisions would have an impact, their decision would have an impact on. Knowing that the very people who cry were going to take money away from the public schools through lawsuits are the very ones who will take us to court if we continue to pray, I've decided, as the board's chair, to go back to a moment of silence in our public meetings until we can clear our plate of other pressing matters that the board's currently facing. I will have a moment of prayer before entering our public meetings, and will invite other board members and Dr. Schiflett to join me if they so desire. I will ask for God's guidance and wisdom for those who sit at the school board dais and His blessings over our families and employees in the Rockingham County School Public Schools. This decision has come from a place of seeking God's guidance on how to proceed on this matter."
I think that's great.
Yeah, I'm not sure it was God's guidance on how to proceed in the matter that's making him stop praying. I think it was legal guidance probably from their local attorney, but I think now, unfortunately, so, while the prayers have stopped for now, this is going to be short-lived because they are in touch with First Liberty Institute, who I'm sure is telling them, "Oh, go for it," you know, and really pushing them with the misconstruing the law and trying to push them because they'd like to try to go before our conservative religious Supreme Court and try to get the law changed.
Right. First Liberty Institute, which is an extremely well-funded, Christian dominionist organization that is pushing exactly this in our public schools. And it's really sad to see because that decision, it's sad that, you know, apparently God was wrong in his guidance once they heard from First Liberty. But the most compelling part of that statement is, you have more pressing matters to be getting on with if you're a public school board member. I bet, you know, maybe consult with your teachers and school principals and see what schools really need. This is doing nothing.
Yep. Another complaint we have, on January 22nd, we wrote to the York County School Board in Virginia after it voted unanimously to impose prayer on students, parents, and community members at its meeting. We have a short clip of how that vote went.
As a new board, something I'd like to see as part of our structure in our board meetings is I'd like to invite a local clergy to open our board up to pray, pray for the board. It is purely optional. This does not make anybody have to engage in it, but it is there for those board members if you so choose to tie your head for prayer. I think it would just be a...
Um, for it 100%, but I think we need to get some guidance from our legal...
And just so you know, I'm sure, I welcome your input. I could seek legal advice before bringing this up because I know that when you introduce anything with religion, prayer, whatever, it's always a delegate issue.
And there is guidance on the styling of the prayer. And just as FYI, with any recognized religion in the United States. So, I know the board supervisors have a list of clergy, invite any clergy who is on this, and they just go through the list one by one.
Right.
But it would, if it was with any recognized religion, so you would have to invite all of you, couldn't invite you, you couldn't pick and choose, you'd have to open up to any recognized religion.
And the Chesapeake that's going through now, what's that? Satanist?
I'm not sure if that's a recognized religion. Wicked is a recognized religion. I'm not sure of the same for itself.
I have no problem with that. I would second the motion if you would.
Are you going to make a motion? Okay. Mrs. Goodwin is moving to add prayer to begin the school board meetings. Is it just for the, for all the regular meetings or the work sessions also in addition?
I was looking at the regular...
The regular meeting.
The regular meeting?
And I would second that.
All right. Seconded by Mr. Richardson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
There's the York County School Board in Virginia doing the important work on behalf of public school students.
Yeah, I mean, there were a lot of issues with that. One, you might have noticed that when she was asked whether the prayer would be before all the meetings or just regular meetings where students, parents, and community members are present, she just wants prayer at the regular meeting.
Yeah, not the private ones.
Right. When there's no one around to see them pray, they don't need to do the prayer, but when students and everyone's around, that's when they have to do it because it's not, as we know, because if they really cared about praying, they could just pray any time they want, they could, or, you know, pray before the meeting, do whatever, I mean...
Right. They have closed sessions where they could pray, and that would pose less of a problem.
Yeah.
But no, that's not what we're dealing with.
Couple of other things to note. One, satanic, Satanist is a recognized religion, for sure, in this country, and, you know, will be able to participate in these sort of things. But two, the attorney there's entire analysis was just wrong. It was an accurate analysis if you were talking about legislative prayer.
Right.
And what the requirements are for that. But because this is school board prayer, they actually just can't have the board leading prayers at the meetings at all. And so, she was inaccurate in...
Right. Just a completely faulty assumption rests on their analysis, which is that they are free to act as though they are a legislative body and not an integral part of a public school system, which of course, they are. And that's how their prayers at school board meetings have been analyzed.
Yep. And the attorney is clearly very confused about that, as we know from the video, but also because we received a response informing us that the board is "in the process of developing the appropriate procedures to ensure compliance with the law as the York County School Division fully supports the Establishment Clause of the First Amendment to the U.S. Constitution." Now, I'm not sure if that means they're going to rescind the decision to impose prayer at their meetings. Probably not, which is where the confusion comes in, but that's the only way that they can ensure compliance with the law. So, we'll have to work with them to let them know, "Okay, we really appreciate that you fully support the Establishment Clause. That means you can't pray." There's no, you know, like, way for them to work around that or a system they can set up where, "Oh, how can we allow prayer without violating the law?" Because at a school board meeting, it's just unconstitutional.
And again, it's so frustrating to see because, again, they're not conducting any business, any public school business. They're figuring out what they can do to advance their own religion at meetings.
Right. And as you guys know, the rise in school board members trying to impose parents, students, parents, and community members, you know, they just want to attend their school board meeting, you know, it's alarming. But our most recent complaint gives me a lot of hope for the future. On January 24th, during the Board of Directors meeting, the Prosser School District Board of Directors discussed whether to begin imposing prayer on students, parents, and community members to begin its meetings, but two student representatives on the board were not having any of it. We got a video, and you can see what happened for yourself.
Just something I was going to bring up because we don't get to, all the board members don't get to talk, except for here. Just a suggestion that maybe during our meetings that we would open in prayer, like, after the pledge. And, you know, I'd be willing to lead it. And I just think there's a lot of things, a lot of issues that we, we, as a school, district, and community even, you know, we, I think there's, we could use some divine intervention. So, just a thought. And like I said, I would be willing to lead it, so.
Well, I think that's a great idea.
Well, I want to turn maybe to lead a prayer too. Can we rotate? If we do it?
Absolutely. I've even had some pastors that have actually said, "Hey, I'd love to come and do that." So, yeah.
I'd like to talk about it.
Yes.
Yeah, but I actually, I won't go. My great-grandmother always, like, there was like a prayer, then there was like three verses for sure, and then the Lord's Prayer, and then some more. So, perhaps, you know, maybe not like grammar...
I think, Michelle, do you have a question?
I don't think that religion should be brought in school. So, I don't think that should happen. I personally am atheist, and I don't think that should happen. So, I, I think that there are a lot of people who give up religions, and I think that'd be disrespectful.
I would tend to agree. I think that that should be something that's excluded. I mean, there's already enough controversy when it comes to saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Why bring more controversy into something that doesn't need it? That'd be my two cents on that. And I would say that if that was a decision you would need, you would want to make, that you would also need to consider bringing in those who'd be willing to say a Muslim prayer, a Buddhist prayer, a Catholic prayer, any or all of the above for inclusivity.
And I think that is part of the freedom that we have, that people who wanted to say Muslim prayer should be able to do that. And I did look in the WASDA book and looked through the pages, and it did, it did talk about that. And I think as a country and as with our Constitution, we have the freedom, we do have the freedom to, to do that.
Yeah. Again, those two voices of reason you heard at the end are student representatives on the board. So, the only student minors on the board are the ones standing up against this proposal to start including prayers in board meetings, which, as you could see, the grownups on the board were so eager to, to be a part of and to invite pastors to be a part of. And you had two board, or two student representatives on the board pushing back and saying, "I don't think we should include this. It's wrong, and we shouldn't have religion in school." That person gets it, which is, we're all in, in school right now. This is the public school district business. Religion does not belong here. And of course, the adult, you know, gets on the defensive and says, "Well, we all have rights under the Constitution," which of course, also includes the rights of all the students in the district who do not subscribe to religion in general or his personal religion. And of course, no one's taking away his right to pray at meetings or any other time that he wants. It's just cloaking the school board itself in religion is wrong, and it's exclusive as these children are pointing out to these grownups. You love to see it.
No, it's so great to see students standing up for the separation of church and Satan. And even declaring, that first girl, he declared she's an atheist.
The courage that that took in that room, I mean, is hard to understand if you're, you know, not a kid atheist, but obviously, all the adult board members are showing that they are theists and they're, you know, eager religious believers, and to stand up and say, "I'm an atheist," took a lot of courage.
Yeah, I mean, it's, as I kind of noted, it's a, it's not something that she had to do. She could have made a strong argument against the prayer without coming out and saying, I mean, we see that a lot where someone's like, "Well, I'm a Christian too, but we shouldn't do this." But no, she was willing to announce it, really stand up, you know, tell these adults that this isn't a church, you know, and it's your job to do work for the district, not to preach to people who weren't asking for it, you know? So, we actually immediately wrote the board to back up these brave students, reminding them the school board prayer violates the law and these students' rights. As you know, in the most recent case striking down a board prayer practice, a case taken by FFRF, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, which has jurisdiction over Washington, hint, hint, which is where this took place. Reaffirmed the Establishment Clause concerns are heightened in the context of public schools because children and adolescents are just beginning to develop their own belief systems, and because they absorb the lessons of adults as to what beliefs are appropriate or right. The court reasoned that prayer at school board meetings implicates the concerns with mimicry and coercive pressure that have led us to be particularly vigilant in monitoring compliance with the Establishment Clause.
What I was describing earlier, which is that public schools are an extremely coercive environment for students, they're, it's an exceptional environment, and it's a different context than other places in government and public life. And that is a vital part of the analysis on whether or not prayer at these meetings violates the Establishment Clause. And again, it's like this, this plea for board members to say, "Well, what about our constitutional rights to just pray, you know, use our government positions, abuse our government positions to pray and promote our personal religion?" And it completely ignores the constitutional right that you just described, which is the right of everyone to be free from government coercion, religious coercion on behalf of the government. And in this case, the public school district, where the power is so great over students, and that's what the Ninth Circuit said in the Chino Valley case.
Right. And I mean, even looking here, look at the practical reality of this situation. If those students weren't, if they didn't have those student positions on the board, they may have been sitting there in the audience, unable to speak their mind, thinking the same thing, "Hey, what are you guys doing?" But not able to voice it.
Of course.
And all the adults there participating in the school board, not a single one had a problem with it. In fact, they all were cheerfully jumping in with new ideas like, "Oh, we should all get to do it. Let's rotate." Turns out, there's some pastors who surprisingly are interested in also praying and preaching to students, like, kind of a crazy, crazy happenstance there, you know? But only because those students were there, were we able to have that dissenting voice that we know is the main view across the country now, as the younger generation becoming more and more nonreligious. It's really only older people who are really feeling like they need to push their religion in this way. Now, also related to these students on the board, in our Chino Valley case, the court actually really emphasized the student role on the board, and in fact, found that, so the Fifth Circuit, as you know, has a case, American Human Association versus McCarty. Now, that's the only appellate decision in the country that's upheld prayer at school board meetings, and it did so distinguish that there were no students there or students on the board. And so, it suggested that where students is a board member, prayer at school board meetings may present constitutional difficulty. So, even in that case, allowing school board prayer, they said, "Oh, if there are students on the board though, this might not be okay." So, even in that one case, it went the wrong way. Here, not only are there students on the board, they actually directly asked the board themselves not to impair, impose prayer on them, you know?
Right.
So, if the board does after, so we actually, I should note, we've received a response from a superintendent indicating they were just talking about it, no decision made, they haven't voted to do prayer. But if they do start opening their meetings with prayer, it's going to subject the district to unnecessary liability and potential financial strain. When we secured a court order in the Chino Valley case, the court ordered the district to pay more than $200,000 in plaintiff's attorney's fees and costs. And after appeal, the court ordered the district to pay an additional $75,000 for those costs associated with the appeal. So, overall, in total, the school district ended up paying more than a quarter million dollars to try to defend their practice of praying at meetings. And as we noted, that case took place in the same circuit as this Washington case. So, that's the law that applies here, is the law that caused that.
And for what? Again, redounds to no benefit to public school students to, you know, put these policies into place. And as the wise minor pointed out at that meeting, all it does is inject controversy into a public school context where it doesn't need to be and doesn't belong, and then also has the added detriment of alienating so many people in the student body, as the other student points out. So, sage advice. Well, let's see if we have any audience questions on this topic. We haven't talked about this in a while, but this is one that we do hear about a lot and have always over the years. Okay. What happens, or what if the prayer happens before the gavel?
Yeah, I mean, so, it really would...
That's a, that's a ploy.
Yep, that's a thing that we deal with. There have been some court cases that have found that to be still a part of the meeting. I mean, really, you know, it's just, courts, you know, there's not always hard and fast rules. They're able to look at the circumstances and go, "Hey, we can tell what you're doing here." So, if it's very clear that they're using... So, if it's very clear that they're using that as.
Prayer is part of the meeting, whether or not it's, you know, erased from the agenda or happens before the gavel goes down. I mean, oftentimes, if it happened before the gavel in private, you wouldn't be hearing from us. So, it's happening before the gavel in circumstances where the board still wants it to happen in front of the audience. That is what is being put into place by these policies, and that's where the problem is. It's like, if there was a before the gavel, you know, a gathering in the, you know, in the meeting room before they come out to the dais and publicly open the meeting, that might present different factual circumstances and analysis on whether that's part of the school board meeting. But whether it happens before or after the gavel, if the circumstances and facts surrounding the prayer, you know, obviously, show that it's part of the meeting, then it makes no difference.
Right.
Oh, this is a good one. Does FFF award activists for speaking out against school board members pushing prayer?
Yeah, we do, especially Student Activist Awards is a thing that we do for any students out there who, not even necessarily really just school board prayer, but anything, you know? Despite the demographics being so good, this is still a little rare for someone like this to take a stand, you know, hoping that it changes. But for now, we definitely want to reward any students like this who are willing to take that stand. And that's why we do the Student Activist Awards, to encourage students like this to speak out, you know, and to just, you know, give them something for their courage and their willingness to fight for their rights so that, you know, other people will have those rights too.
Yes, we love our student activists, and we do give out Student Activist Awards every year. Okay, do you think school board members run for these positions with the explicit intention of introducing prayer? Or is it something that just happens over time?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's definitely a mix of both, you know? You could even tell, even from these various situations we've covered. Matt Cross, in his Facebook post, said, "I have wanted to open the school board meetings with prayer for years." He has not been on the school board for a year. So, he was off the school board, thinking about it. They'd just sit at home, waiting for that moment. Some of the other ones, it seemed like they were more truly like just a thing, that's a thing they thought of, maybe they heard it from somewhere, maybe, you know, someone brought it to them, but.
I do think this is something that dovetails with other culture war issues that has caused people to begin to infiltrate public school boards for, you know, Christian dominionist reasons, like Moms for Liberty, and, you know, people trying to get on school boards so that they can enact extreme anti-LGBT policies in public schools and ban books and ban, you know, saying gay and all the things. Folds in very, you know, there's a lot of overlap in the Venn diagram between that intention for getting on a school board and, you know, adding prayer back into school in whatever way you can. And when these school board members attain that power, you know, they want to put the Christian, you know, dominionist stamp on every piece of government power that they can get. And that is why school board prayer is wrong. It is a way for certain people to abuse their power to advance their own religious beliefs. And it's at the cost of everyone else in the school district's rights.
Yeah, and I think that was a great answer and maybe a good place to wrap it up.
Yeah.
A good.
All right, well, that concludes Ask an Atheist for this week. But don't forget, we also have a weekly broadcast TV show. It's Free Thought Matters. And this week, Annie Laurie Gayler and Dan Barker have a conversation with Harrison Mumia, the founder and president of the Atheists in Kenya Society.
Atheists in Kenya Society was registered in 2016 through efforts that me and a few other Kenyans made to get the society registered. The registration wasn't a small sailing